All right, so welcome. And yes, I agree with Pastor. What a beautiful land it's been. Can't see any water standing anywhere, or a single drop. It went into the ground. I've had a couple of the farmers and ranchers tell me that the ground is clean wet from this amount of rain. So that's a wonderful thing. We'll take up item number two. Discuss and take possible action on approval of personnel action forms.
The persons can be related and increase within approved slot. Next one's Christopher Walls, new hire, direction officer. Cassandra Doughty, telecommunications. And I need to correct the salary. It should be thirty-nine, one twenty-four, eighty. David Muse, new hire deputy. Matheny Montoro, his resignation, direction officer. Paul Rodriguez, increase in slot recent year. That's it.
I'm going to approve personal action forms.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel action forms. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three. Discuss and take possible action on approval of official bond and oath for Jennifer Conegney County Treasurer. So you have a copy in there of the voting of the bond. We just need to do an approval down toward the source.
I will make approval of the official bond and oath. Congratulations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the official bond and oath for Jennifer Conegney County Treasurer. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four. County Auditor Monthly Report.
Good morning, Detective.
Good morning.
So I presume you have balances as of end of November. The graph there shows where we were at in November 2022 and how we're doing now in November 2023. It's about a four million dollar difference. I can't pinpoint exactly how we got there, but there has been a lot of increases, hold up salaries, transfer outs to county courthouse, driven out probation, law library, all of those have on a, health premiums have on a. The county case for about roughly ninety percent of those health premiums, and forty pays for that, ten percent. And then third page, you have a breakdown of each individual fund and what their balance was at the end of November. PTO still in the hole, half a million dollars. We're still waiting for the fourth quarter of prior grant year. So that's July, August, September, and then also first month of this grant year. We're still pending to receive three of the counties' four hundred thousand dollar contributions to our fund balance. We've received our portion and then per counties. So we're working with those three counties to see when we're going to receive their portion. And then the last page are debt service. The only difference between last month and this month, we paid off our ten sixteen seventeen. We made the payment last month. And then the next one to be paid off is that ten, series twenty twenty-one, which we'll
Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Here we go. Item number five. Discuss and take possible action on approval of accounts payable.
So our whole account payable this time is five hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. And we did have two wires and then our over ten thousand, that's just the one.
Yeah, it looks like we did good. We should keep it under fifty thousand. Did we? Did we have eighteen thousand, four hundred twenty-three hundred and sixty-two cents?
In this, in this one.
In this one? Did we mess up one or?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think. That's why we had to workshop right after. I think we actually did do it because we thought it'd be all right.
But we do appreciate your optimism.
We're close. We were very close.
We're very close, but no, they're not.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable, but I can't see any exceptions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable with zero exceptions. Any other discussion?
I need to say something.
Okay. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Your full extension. Commissioner Walron. Item number six. Discuss and take possible action on approval of dispersment of funds since last commissioner's court meeting.
So we have two utility grants since last court for a rainfall of seventeen thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
I'll move to approve those dispersments. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the dispersment of funds since last commissioner's court meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven. Discuss and take possible action on approval of County Treasurer's Monthly Report.
This report is for the month of September. We have a cash balance up combined with totally twenty-two million, eight hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and four cents. Also with a total debt owed by the county, twenty-four million, nine hundred forty-two thousand, thirty dollars. And we have received all department reports. So we are, there are still some that need to be received and processed, but we've gotten extremely caught up with all of that, so that's very good. But we have received every department report, so.
Okay, so just quick. So we all have all the reports or y'all worked through them then, or y'all worked through them yet?
No, we still need to receive them and then we use a lot of them.
Okay. But we're down to your part of it then?
Yeah, so probably a handful left that we need to get processed. And we've just been working on it in like little minor discrepancies that goes in the report, but the new process is following really, really well.
And we have everything we need now? It's working well from our, from Tyler's side? Are we happy with that or we still need some stuff with Tyler?
Tyler, we're still working on getting a few feet that's changed.
Okay. But the report itself, the way it feeds out, y'all are happy with that part of it? Y'all like it?
For the most part.
The only thing that I still need to go back and request from also district clerk as well, it's that one report where I'm wanting the GL comes to be listed on the feedback report as well. That has not been done as far as I know.
So we're getting closer. All right.
Tyler, we're still working on getting a few feet that's changed.
Okay. But the report itself, the way it feeds out, y'all are happy with that part of it? Y'all like it?
For the most part.
The only thing that I still need to go back and request from also district clerk as well, it's that one report where I'm wanting the GL comes to be listed on the feedback report as well. That has not been done as far as I know.
So we're getting closer. All right.
I'll move to approve the County Treasurer's Monthly Report.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the County Treasurer's Monthly Report. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight. Visitors or public comments? None this morning? All right, so at this time, we will stand in recess until ten a.m. All right, it is ten oh one. We will call court with a petition at this time. Next, we have agenda item number ten. Discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval of Megan's Landing Subdivision Unit Two located in precinct two off of FM nineteen fifty-seven.
Well, after some research on this and thanks to Jennifer, she found this issue with the naming of the street. We just got off the phone with the owner of the subdivision, and he is going to contact nine one one and get the changes to that. Trouble is, we have a Piper Street that goes farther to an intersection of nine one one, says one part should be east and the other should be, and I'll take care of it coming right now. Thank you for being here. I'll hold off my conversation until you walk in. You're not in trouble yet.
Okay. Don't make that shit. Sorry, I'm late. Good morning.
Okay, we're talking about your subdivision over here with Piper Street. Jennifer, I just got off the phone with Harry Howden. That is not it, but anyhow. Piper Street coming from the east is going to be left Piper Street. He is going to change the name once he crosses that intersection to a different man, and he will be calling you today.
Perfect.
So other than that, I will make a, go ahead and give a preliminary approval. If it doesn't happen, we kill it in a month. Go ahead and give a preliminary approval to the approval of the vacate of the Megan's Landing subdivision Unit Two. Jennifer, does that make sense what we're talking about?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second to grant preliminary approval of Megan's Landing Subdivision Unit Two located in precinct two off of FM nineteen fifty-seven. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven. Discuss and take possible action on granting a variance or preliminary approval to vacate and replat a four point five zero acre lot out of portions lot, the lot twenty-one and twenty-two to the L.L. White subdivision that's located in precinct one off the county road forty-four oh one. And Gary Howden is here with us this morning.
Good morning.
We do have this, as you may have noticed on here, as a variance or a preliminary approval. Gary's going to go through a couple of things with the court and let y'all kind of decide how you would like it personally.
Yes, my client owns a forty acre tract. It is in, it's part of lot twenty-one, all of lot twenty-two, and also part of Tinara Lane, Westside property. It was abated her by meets and bounds. These lots, twenty-one and twenty-two, are in what's called the Louis L. White subdivision of the TJ-Service number nine forty-one. This plat was recorded in the plat records of the county in eighteen eighty-one. If you have a copy of the vacating re-subdivided plat, if you look on the left side, the vacating plat, it shows the current configuration of the property. So my client wants to sell four and a half acres in the northeast corner of the forty acres, as she has currently had fenced off. The front's on the east side on one of these Tinara Lanes, which is, the fee is twenty-seven point eight feet. This lane is not open and there's apparently not a county road at this time. County Road forty-four oh one ends at about what would be the southeast corner of this four and a half acre. Now, since this subdivision was recorded in eighteen eighty-one, and if you have a copy of the current CAD map, I know your copy not, that one isn't this big, but if you look at all those tracts that are within that subdivision, they've just been divided up. Some of the, some of the lines follow the little lot lines. A lot of the lines do not follow the lot lines. All of these tracts have been conveyed by meets and bounds descriptions. None of them have been conveyed by lot and lot. So, I must have thought. So originally I was going to ask, I approached Jennifer to ask about, could this be an exception under the one-time conveyance rule? Because, you know, an owner can convey one piece of land out of their property through exceptions and plagues. We spoke with the county attorney. She said it really doesn't apply because of the subdivision plat. She suggested we come to the court and ask for a variance. So the basis for the variance that we're requesting is that none of these tracts have ever been conveyed by lot and lot. They've never been. As far as Jennifer says, she's researched it. Nothing in this subdivision has ever come before the court. There's no record in commissioner's court records about any procedures in this subdivision. One exception, on county road forty-four oh two, this year, there was a subdivision called El Tejano Ranch. Four lots, four five acre lots that was platted, but in that plat, they did not vacate the L.L. White and replat. They didn't do that. They just did a plain plat. So my request for variance is based on that this subdivision is written and treated as a subdivision. I guess we're open for discussion.
Okay, providing this lot, does each one have its own water or what's, do they have its own water? Does each one have the crazy delta or?
I'm not sure.
That just, you don't have water?
Are you talking about the whole entire subdivision?
No, I'm talking about this individual lot that they're.
Individual lot? They don't have water yet. There's water there.
Is that going to be heat for dinner in their water well or what?
It'll be.
Oh.
It'll be yentin.
There's, yeah, I think it's yentin water though.
Yentin water? That, that, it's going to have water. You don't, I'll walk the water, do whatever you can to do to get this thing locked. It didn't look like it is the best. Going to have access to it off the county road? It's going to have, going to have water? That's kind of a no brainer if this, I'm sure they could drill a well if they had to or whatever, if it is supplied with water.
What is missing at this point is the access. County road is, is a likely.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have access.
So, so this, you know, this on one side, you have the vacating plat.
Correct.
And this is the, the re-subdivided plat. So on the original plat, there is a Tinara.
Right.
On this side. And a Tinara on this side. But on the replat, this one goes away. So the property owners to the north and to the south have that Tinara easement, but somehow this one went away along the backside of the property. So my question is, why? Because there, there is, you know, a potential that you have landowners to that degree to have kind of a joint easement to be able to get to the properties to the north, and it's being cut off with this replat.
We could advise that and leave the Tinara road in there if that's what you're designing.
Yeah, we can cut that road off if somebody uses it to get anything.
From, from the south, nobody's, I think there may be some private roads down in there somewhere.
So, yeah, so there's a fora, I mean, you showed us your big eleven by seventeen. There's, there's a Tinara here and a Tinara here, but on the replat, it's gone away. So it causes an issue if everybody wants to.
Okay, the reason for that was that I understand your point, but the reason I took it out was because the meets and bounds included that Tinara road, meets and bounds of the forty acres.
Okay, that goes back a long way on meets and bounds. Most time that was what they called them, was private easement back in the day. The neighbors that, yeah, you use my road to go through here. I have, especially in my district, have worked dozens, I mean, county road two seventy-one all over the lake is private easement. They come in here and they survey out there, like a hundred acre tract, five acres of it goes across the county road into another man's piece of property. And then they say, well, we're going to put a fence up across our property. No, you're not. That's for private easement. Has this easement been used? That's another thing. Has it been used? If it's easement there, you're going to somebody's property, and just because you extend across that county road now, are easement, whatever you want to call it, don't mean it's yours.
Subject is.
You know, and that's all over the county. It's just the way it is. And I've seen it run into it a lot on the castle and, and, I mean, almost every road other, two seventy-one, one, but in lake was, it's like this, four seventy-one. People have one and a half acre over here as well back in the day. Well, they're not going to cross my property and put up a fence. So that's what we're trying to keep from happening here. Wouldn't it make it be easier if somebody had dedicated a road to this property for both sides? That would be the easiest way to do it, to where everybody has access to the property back there in back. I have a suburb all north of Vulcan's Glory. They go through seven different pieces of property to get to their property to back up against the lake. And everyone has a vacated. But they do have a twenty foot or thirty foot easement to go from the county road all the way back to the back piece of property. There's back two copies north of him here. So like I say, if you go in there and then be able to fix this all, we're going to have mad people in there, if they use it or not.
Right.
So the meets and bounds, I have no problem with that, but you, when you go to meets and bounds, you really got to realize now that back in eighteen such as, they used a chain to measure all the property. And I would say that chain is probably just accurate with the equipment GPS they have today. Because they're not far off. So anyhow, that's what you're dealing with here. Are we going to deprive somebody with easement? If I, if I want to look at the piece of property, first thing I'd look at, what access do I have to this property? And now you just have one that's been cut off. If it's been used or not. So I don't know where, you know, to go at. They used to call it twenty beards. You had to have twenty beards, whatever period is you're engineering, you don't be able to answer that.
Two point seven seven seven.
Okay, so it's about two point seven beard would be going, twenty beard, about thirty feet.
The less.
See there? He wasn't, he wasn't named after. But anyhow, that's what you're getting into with approval of this, of other than variances. Yeah, I don't have a problem with using variance of one time available, but are we cutting off access to somebody's property?
Well, if, if we, if we got the variance and the replat is out, out the window, we will be doing that, we will change that easement.
Yeah, if we do a variance, it doesn't come in with commissioner's court agreeing that you're right, and then we take on any liability that comes after us later on in our honor roll.
Well, if you.
We accept the reliability of.
If you grant the variance to, there's subdivision requirements.
I agree it's an exception.
It's an exception.
Exception, right. And we won't touch the easement on the west side. It'll remain, it's under her meets and bounds, but her property would be subject to that easement still. And I can remove that from the re-subdivision part of it.
But that's on the west side.
Yes.
We're talking about the east side as well.
So, yeah, we're talking about the east side. That road is not within her meets and bounds. It's only shown on the subdivision plat as a lane, whatever, per definition of that. It's not been accepted as a county road.
Vacate. It'd be a county road vacate. It wouldn't be a.
It doesn't meet the right requirements. Yeah, so maintenance only. It's not been accepted for maintenance. It's currently not approved. It's got some gravel on it. It's distant piles. So, yeah, I'm not sure what we're going to do there. But the first question is, do we, with the court, allow us to get an exception or variance or whatever mechanism we need to use to say that, okay, we don't need to do a vacating replat for this sake, for this transaction?
I think because it's a platted subdivision, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, so the whole exception thing is probably not, not usable, because you're not building a new subdivision. And that's what our subdivision regs are talking about when we have the nine exceptions. One of them being somebody selling, first time selling a portion of their original tract, which this could be just the original tract. But that's developing a subdivision. Or not, because this is already a platted subdivision. It's like San Antonio Trust out in the southeast part of the county. Done it back in the early nineteen hundreds, but it is a platted subdivision.
Yes, and we spoke with the county attorney about that issue, and that's what she said. She said, exception is really not what you want. You want the variance.
Historically, since I've been here, we haven't always treated that the way we do now, which I think is the correct way, except for platted subdivisions. What we do is done within that is treated as a vacated replat. And which this would be, and I have no problem doing a vacated replat. They need all the lot size standards and everything else. They just don't have access to their property without an easement from the woman that wants to sell it. If she would grant an easement for them to get onto their property from the county road, in my mind, that's, it's done. But at this point, there's no, there's no way for the purchaser of this little square to get to their land legally, because the county road ends before he gets there.
And that would have to be before our rules, if it were even.
Oh, for, no, we should from the county road to.
Yeah, I'm saying this has gone so long ago, like David was saying, is this a platted subdivision? Because we do have that stuff down there in San Antonio Land Road. That shows me it's, it's laid out subdivision. That's what I said. Does it have roads? Does it have boundary lines or whatever?
On paper.
And this has it all on paper back in eighteen eighty-seven. Somebody had pretty good handwriting. They did a pretty good job for eighteen eighty-seven. So like David was saying, until you can get guaranteed that people access this property to where it wasn't, where they have access to it, it's just, we're not a county attorney to figure that out.
If you only think you could.
Think you probably would have to.
Yeah, I want to get out a couple of things. So first off, it is a recorded plat. I mean, it's referenced in the deed records as volume and page. You know, sometimes you'll find older subdivisions that are referred to as unrecorded subdivision. This one has a volume and plat number in the plat records. This one has a volume and flat number in the flat records that tells me it's recorded subdivision at one point, even if it was eighteen eighty-one. I did find a handful of deeds over time that did reference a lot of block legal descriptions, sometimes supplemented by meets and bounds, sometimes not, but it, it has been used. My concern is that a lot of times it's an old subdivision, it's wonky, you've had inconsistency over the years of how various lots in a subdivision have been treated by various courts over time, but at the same time too, when someone calls and says, "We're trying to do this, we're just trying to sell this piece," you can't just go to the judge's office or come to me and say, "Oh, no," you don't have to go through the replat requirement. It's not up to Jen, it's not up to me to tell someone, you don't have to do that, it's the court that has the legal authority to either follow the subdivision rules and either put somebody through the test of the replat requirement, make sure things like water, make sure things like access are direct, you know, directed, uh, on that, or, uh, to either grant a variance. And so, what I had referred Mr. Allen to was section fourteen of the county subdivision rules that talks about variances, and under the, uh, local government code, it's the decision the court to grant or deny a variance, and it's at its complete discretion and will be final, and so, it does give the court the authority under certain special circumstances to do that, but it is the court's authority, it's not mine, it's not Jen's, and so, because y'all are used to approving subdivisions, y'all know what the rules are, y'all know to look for things like access, that type of thing. So, but it is the court's authority to decide whether or not they're gonna require a party to follow the full replat requirement or not.
And that's exactly why I took one of the things off policy to come to a vacated decision like that.
And typically, a title company is not going to ensure a property that doesn't have access, and so, that's kind of another, you know, it's going through a title company, typically a title company won't ensure a property that, that doesn't have the proper access, it's land laws.
So, and that's my concern, that four-and-a-half acres that is out there, what is the now written down access for that piece of property? Okay? And can't explain that to me and show it on the replat?
Right.
That's not, that's not...
Does one, one have any information on this one or whatever? Y'all know everything else.
No, I, I haven't seen this one, I don't know what it looks like. It's not there.
Yeah, she hasn't, she hasn't given much information on this one, girl.
Do you, like, look at the map?
I actually counted her going all the way here, but I don't know exactly where.
This is forty-four-one, and it stops right there.
Okay, on my map, I have it going all the way.
Yeah, we, we were just discussing that, we're not sure why that does that, that's even right.
I can get my map corrected, so it shows correctly on the map book as well.
Yeah, and so, I think we'll come back and address that separately from this, that we just need to make sure that, but it looks like it should not turn back east.
Okay.
This is the four-and-a-half acres they wanted to sell, and the county road stops right there.
Okay.
Sparkly.
Like y'all said, with the rules of having to have access, I agree, that there should be some point of dedicated access for that, for that tract.
I think the main question will be, we're not trying to make sure he has access, we're trying to make sure you don't cut off somebody else's access that has it in their deeds and records, like she said, it is some of it as possible. We can't deny somebody else they'll get on the property because of the sale of the property. Does that make sense?
Yes, but, so, my question maybe to Maggiore, uh, what effect does the, the lanes, the ten vara lanes on the original subdivision flat have, what kind of effect do they have? Is that to grant access, or does that not provide access to this property?
Well, I think you would have to go back and sort through all the history, all these individual tracts, and see what's been done over time, I think, you know, in terms of, you know, and analyzing it in specific, to specific property owners, I think you'd have to look at it that way, and to, to look at all of it as a whole, and then go through that chain of title over time.
Well, this immediate area, the people on the west side follow the west side of that lane, people east side follow the east side of that lane, so nobody really owns the lane itself.
I think you would just have to look at the chain of title, and any given tract, and figure out what their access is.
So, is there a way to get them access on the, I mean, can you get them access that she can?
I will have to talk to the owner, I don't think she wants to have them drive it up, her driveway to get there, I don't know, you know? The reference for the seller and the buyer, you're going into Hutter County.
Uh, to our, I'm Ted Carroll, who I do, uh, broker for the seller. Uh, to our understanding, uh, that county road has been now vetted, would give her all the access and then somewhere that's terminated, it's been sold. Uh, right now, it's, looks like it's dead in the maps, and she was wanting to have it to clean the square at four-point-five acres, is that something that the court has absolutely have? Can discuss that with my client, however, the way this lays out, the way we saw the county road, what it used to be, uh, we were hoping that we could just have, she could have that entire, or an easy...
Yeah, that's, that's three acres, three acres.
Three acres, uh, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to be four-point.
No, it doesn't, and we started reading the thought of, oh, so you got a room there invested, whatever you need to put in, or dedicated, dedicated road?
Does that make... We just gotta make sure we get access, she's probably back here, but if this is one time, what's the county road? Like I said, this is not in my district, I don't really wanna step on nobody's driveway, but I have, I had a few years here, I know how this stuff works.
Jessica, welcome to the meeting.
When you resume, we're like, we're just hoping they're falling.
But Tanner, thinking, or, or Allen, she could reconfigure that four-point-five acres to be a, a different shape that would extend so that the county road would...
Absolutely.
However, it could cross her driveway.
She, her driveway is right at the corner before that, that's not...
She doesn't wanna mess with her driveway.
She didn't wanna mess with her driveway, she's a deep-won person, big, uh...
I believe Jessica, matter of voting, yeah, she's a very, very opinionated, wants her, her way, her driveway, her everything, so that his buyer has her driveway.
And so, the way that this laid out, she was always very ignorant through the county mapping, the way that it was re-mapped, and so, that was her, basically using that as prime.
I think it needs to be determined exactly where the county road ends, and Jessica knows where the maintenance ends, and if that's where the county road ends and that's it, if it, if it by chance extends beyond what Jessica thinks and is adjacent to this new piece of property, then there might be enough room to be able to...
Get a second, get a second entrance on the very southeast corner of the existing four-point-five acres.
That's correct.
So, that's, that is...
So, determining the length of that county road is...
Her forgery is in set, yes, correct. Maybe just right there.
And even an easement, then the four-and-a-half has to be sixty feet? Private easement?
Private easement's not...
I don't think anybody does.
What is, is there a minimum?
It's not. I don't, I don't know that the county determines a minimum of, of an easement, somebody's access off, off their private property. If it's a sixty-foot riding way, it's not, it's not. That would be what the county requires, into its account.
Right, right.
We're talking about if it's not, if she's...
Probably, I think you're giving four feet.
Yeah.
I think if five, if you give, I don't need to get, if I want to sell somebody a hundred acres, all I gotta do is give them twenty feet.
Yeah.
What's a front ride, if that's the...
Twenty feet, five feet minimum ride.
Yeah.
So, so Aaron can, we can take the legal description of the existing county road and go out there and put pins legally where the county road ends.
Yes.
And I'm sure you already have, Aaron, you already have pins showing where the four-point-five is broken down, and just compare it, that way, the county road might extend further north, uh, and the four-point-five acre tract may be able to take access off of the county road. Now, if the county road stops south of the property, then the next steps would be working with the original property owner to get the four-point-five acre tract access through some sort of...
To her property, through the remaining property.
I mean, you have some houses in the back that are past them, so we'll probably implement a private road from the point that the county road ends to the back.
Well, that's, if it is a private road, if they, if they use that as access, how did that help those houses get to their place now?
Are the addresses on the county road right now? Are they addressed on the county road?
That's what I'm checking right now, to see if how many addresses are...
Uh, this property address is four-oh-one, CR forty-four-oh-one.
We're talking about if it turns...
Your address?
The forty acres.
Yes, I do have...
You're talking about all the part that turns back east and north, right?
I have three addresses.
And they're all on that, they're all addressed as the county road right now?
As the owner, yeah.
Beyond what we say the end, the part that's, that should be there, those are addressed?
So, I'll come to the issue.
Their address is...
Well, I'll say at the bottom line, we can't fence off that lot of roads, or somebody has a possibility of getting those, they can't do it at all.
We don't wanna fence off any roads.
Yeah.
Her fences are already in place, basically around...
Because they rented more too, they were in, in place, and then rolled through the rock. So, that's, they've got eight somewhere, county road.
So, I guess, back to the agenda items, the question is, to the court, do you have the question about variance, or how are you gonna wanna do a vacated replat? I guess we need to determine, y'all can determine that part, so they know how to proceed, how you wanna handle this. Well, I don't know that there's any special circumstances that require that we give a variance for, it's just a matter of if they're gonna follow the vacated replat guidelines that we have, since it's an established subdivision, that's what needs to happen. And then, I don't mind granting preliminary approval for that, but you're gonna have to work out some kind of an access.
Right, right.
It'd be fine.
Water, right, water.
Yeah.
Whatever the test for.
I agree with Mr. Lynch, I think if, um, you can give preliminary approval, but in order to grant, file approval, that, that access has to be worked out, minimized on this, this replat, and make sure that we have the water, so, I mean, it's, once you get access to that four-and-a-half acres, I think you should be...
So, that could be a provision, I don't know where that's at, but it's not a good situation. Or why, like, that?
So, Commissioner, ask Leal, would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
She goes, that sounded a lot like one of the meetings.
Okay.
Both.
I recommend, uh, granting the preliminary approval to a vacated replat, but in order to get the, the final through, uh, access has to be determined for the four-and-a-half acres, uh, and meet all the other existing subdivision requirements.
That'd be water?
Water, yeah.
Since that one she had.
I'm making the cloud statement, so it means...
I'll second that.
And, uh, you also wanted to, you wanted us to not vacate the western...
And not vacate the western, the ten vara.
Right, so leave that in.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to grant preliminary, preliminary approval to vacate the replat, a four-point-five acre lot out of portions of lot twenty-one and twenty-two of LL White subdivision, located at precinct one, off the county road forty-four-oh-one, uh, with the provisions that were stated by Commissioner in her motion. Any other discussion?
One other question, do, does notifications have to be sent out? And this one, Jennifer?
Yeah.
And how long does that take?
It has to be published for three weeks.
Three weeks?
Whether it be...
Three, four weeks, it's hard to get a copy of that, Duncan, for...
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah.
Do you have anything you want, typically takes to get approval for, for answer water?
Not very long.
Water, yeah, that's what it is, it's gotta have water available.
Just need a letter, this is...
It's either the answer water, or the well, or, or some of the well, whatever, water in there, it's gonna have available water.
Any other discussion?
Can you get electricity?
Or, or if it's not, if they have no water, whatever, is it five acres, is the minimum?
Five acres over the, and three acres in the, in the road.
If they have water or sewer, if they don't have either one...
If they have water or sewer, they could go down to one acre. For sure, three acres, I don't have, I don't have this issue, my, it's, it's all my issue.
I gotta, I can set up for you. But if she could, to, to get past the water issue, if she needs to make the lot bigger...
Uh, that was why, for my understanding of the subdivision rules and guidelines, it was, nothing had to be added to three acres plus, uh, so that's why she was at five acres listed, and now, uh, without, we had to cut it down to be within her garden means that she wanted to, uh, uh, it now is still would be, gonna exceed the subdivision guidelines.
It's three acres.
It's three?
Three with water?
With either or.
Either or, and without either.
You think over three, right?
It's three.
And she also does have, uh, electricity right there?
I'm sorry, it's one acre with either or, three without.
Without either, you got it.
Okay, so if we're still, so she needs that, so she needs...
She's four, yeah, she's fine.
She needs it, because it's with three.
She doesn't have to, yeah.
Yeah.
She don't have to have, she don't have to have a right approval, so that's off the table?
Correct.
Yep.
She's got four-and-a-half acres.
But she doesn't need access.
Yeah.
Access, and remove the vacate and whatever, ten vara lane over west.
You, you have to put that back on.
Leave it on.
Yes. This discussion took a lot longer than I expected, but it's a good discussion.
My apologies. Jennifer says I get all the weird ones. And, no.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, I, I follow those same sign, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. All right, item number twelve, discussed date, cross-flat, shall extend closing date on previously approved, host money contract for purchase of lot three, lot six, CJ Bless tradition, city of the county of Texas, commonly known as thirteen oh six, Fourteenth Street, on the back, and you want to just breathe a second?
The original artist money contract you guys had approved, um, contemplated closing on before November fifteenth, and we had some pickups in the title commitment, um, that have since been resolved, but we're just extending the closing date on before December twenty-ninth, a little bit more time, uh, for the survey to be completed, uh, and then also looking at some zoning work, um, just to finish up those items.
Um, we approve the extension, the extension of the closing date on the previously approved artist money contract, the purchase of lots, two lots, CJ Bless tradition. I was ready.
I have a motion in a second to extend the closing date, um, as stated by Commissioner Lynch. Any other discussion?
Uh, is, is, are we looking at, this is a one-time deal, and we should not have to come back for another extension?
We don't, so, I mean, we, we held off on, ordered the appraisal and survey until we saw that the title issues were resolved, because we didn't wanna spend the county's money on appraisal, uh, actually seller's bank with the survey, uh, but there's also a zoning fee involved, so we didn't wanna spend that only to find out that the title issues... issues were not terrible, and so we resolved the title issues, uh, the appraisers come in flying, uh, so we're just waiting on the, uh, the survey and the zoning work just coming, and so I don't have, uh, see any issue of the, uh, survey not being completed in time, um, still working with the city of Hondo on the zoning request, um, and so we, we certainly hope to have it done by the end of the year, and so I would prefer that as well, so we're, we're definitely pushing for that, so, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 13, discuss and take possible action on passing resolution, casting the votes to elect board of directors, um, for Medina appraisal district 2024, 2025. Uh, you saw the deal there, Kyla Sheely-Burl, is our person that we nominated to it, and it's my suggestion to the court that we cast our, we have 1,507 votes and that we cast those for Kyla, um, on our sheet, that we submit them on her behalf. Kyla Sheely-Burl, the one that he submitted. And that we, my suggestion is we cast them all to our person.
I would like to go forward.
Yes, that's
Okay.
You have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to cast 1,507 votes for Kyla Sheely-Burl for the board of directors Medina appraisal district 2024, 2025. Any other discussion?
Okay, are all the rest, is there an order ready yet?
No, well, this, we're going through the process and different people, it will nominate, we did that about a month ago, we're going through the nominations, so there's all kinds of different entities, I, I don't actually know who all those entities are, but I don't know if they're, it's like literally that divine is cast, the schools have cast, the cities have cast, that's, they've been out there, will be the top five that, that put on.
The front five, a little
That's correct. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 14, discuss and take possible action on approval of amendment, current lease agreement with the Shiva and two machines to jail the district judge's office. Sheu B.
Good morning, commissioners. Basically what we're doing is adding two new machines to the original contract, and one of those machines is a 45 page per minute machine for the district judge. They currently have a smaller to accomplish and it wasn't suiting their needs, so what we're going to do is take that machine, since it's still under contract, and move it over to the jail. There will be a smaller unit and a huge unit, which is a 55 page per minute unit, and we're shifting that smaller one over to the jail, and we're going to take the 45 page per minute, put it up in district judge, and order an additional one for the jail, which is the 55 page per minute. The total is going to be $596, which is 249 for the district judge and 34683 for the jail.
And that's, five ninety-six, it's a monthly contract.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion in a second to approve amendment, the current lease with the Shiva Act, the two machines, the jail and the district judge's office. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, discuss and take possible action on approval, Thompson, I'm sorry, Thompson Ruter's agreement with West Proflex access for the Hill Country Public Defender's Office, also known as West Law, correct, Ms.?
Yes.
So this is for the West Law, uh, and this is, there's a slight change in money, but it's slight, slight by pennies, uh, but the main thing is it's taking it from her county and giving it to the union county.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the Thompson, Thompson Ruter's agreement for West Proflex access. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item number 16, discuss and take possible action, the current items from the following offices surplus are salvaged and authorized disposal.
Items for precinct number two, you see pictures on your listing, uh, the surplus items are going to be auctioned off is our understanding, and the salvage items will be disposed of. For Hondo building, uh, I believe this, um, warehouse that was in the back was cleaned out, and a lot of those items, of course, were older, so those items will be disposed of.
Okay, on precinct two stuff, there's, uh, there belongs to multiple precincts, as far as the chipper. Uh, if y'all want to just come get it, they
Yeah, I was actually about to tell you. I'd like to have
You can have, I don't know, wash our, the other part of the precinct one.
Okay.
Well, yes, same thing.
All I'm asking to prove, probably, we haven't used it since we got the building.
Okay.
There really not a whole lot wrong with it.
Okay.
On that item, will we transferring it?
That would be the
We already, it's
It's
So we actually won't do anything with that, we just want to remove, get all this stuff and, it's just going to go to the middle yard.
Okay, there's another one, there is a belly dump trailer, it's in good shape, it's part of 50% shape, it's just a old, old, old machine. It is usable. It don't have no air conditioning, that's all the belly dump. If anybody wants it, come and get it.
I'll send the guy after you, you don't want it?
Don't, no, you can't turn around and sell it, then?
No. It's an easy sold.
Okay, that's good, that's, that's another one. Okay, I do have another dump truck.
Okay, hold on a second, so belly dump to
Belly dump transfer.
The four.
I'm still not giving away that, I think there are a few on that. Okay, I have a 1986 dump truck, uh, it has no air conditioning, and you see through the floorboard, the truck runs absolutely perfect. If anybody wants it, you can have it.
That's air conditioning.
It's air conditioning, don't go to the windows anymore.
You need that, it's hot, so Chief, you need a fire truck. Air conditioning through the floorboard.
Do the same thing.
Like I say, it's a, the tire worn out, it needs, uh, pins out along with our, uh, motor runs on, it's been watching it start up right now, it don't rip nothing out of the tailgate, it's perfect for hauling cotton rock. Uh, if nobody wants it, it's going to the auction. The next thing is, I got a sweeper there that does have some issues on it, it will start, but the broom is worn out, and the broom is probably worth as much as the whole The rest of the stuff is either junk or poor, it's in bad shape. So it sounds like I got a better person wants a chipper and a belly dump, the rest of it will be all to, probably to be
That's, that's coming up, December 9th or something?
Oh, it is.
Because we had some stuff to get there, I think it's December 9th, I think this is auction.
The category or, or I can, it's pretty good shape. But I think they'll brand more for scrap yard, we can go, go buy brand more if they have any of them.
Nobody else put anything from Larry's book of jewels?
We're just, my guy is just trying to clean up rally or?
All right, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, my discharge, whatever equipment, the rest of the county does not want, how's that?
We're moving forward, maybe
If you want it, come on, I'll take a look at it.
Also for Hondo buildings?
I don't have, I don't know what Hondo building is.
Do you have a moving
I would say, I would say it just there, give it Does that take care of that? I will make that motion.
Okay, I think I have a motion.
What, what's that?
Yeah, I have a motion, um, to, um, for surplus and salvage, authorized disposal, um, for precinct two surplus, precinct two salvage, and Hondo building salvage, with the exception of the two items that will be transferred to other precincts, is that correct?
I will second that.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 17, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of the following newly assigned private roads into the official mapping system, private road 2201 in precinct three, and private road 6741 in precinct three.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept newly assigned private roads.
Have a motion in a second to accept the newly private, newly assigned private roads into our official mapping system, any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item 18, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of an application to cancel lot six of Encino Hills subdivision located in precinct three off County Road 5710 and authorize publication of notice to cancel lot six.
Uh, this is a, a water issue, I don't know if Jennifer wants to explain it, she might be able to do better than me, I actually talked to Bruce Alexander about this, this subdivision was established back in nine
Nineteen ninety-five.
Ninety-five, under the guise of, of having East Medina water if they met all the requirements. It was approved through the commissioners' court back in ninety-five, developer was, developer packed up and left and did not meet the requirements that East Medina needed it to meet, and so they refused to grant water to the subdivision. So since that time, multiple lots, which I'm assuming are circled in yellow here
Yes.
Have said, we want out of this subdivision, because if they get out, East Medina will deal with it on an individual basis. And so over a period of time, uh, looks like 10 lots have decided, we're going, we're going to remove ourselves from the subdivision, and the court has granted that. Um, so I would be, I would say, let's do it for these folks so that they can get water, unless there's another alternative that maybe Maggie has, if we need to look into, um, eliminating the entire subdivision, it's, the majority of it's already gone, so there's five lots left.
Yeah, three, I believe three of those lots, Bruce told me that the landowners went together and dealt with them and had them extend water to them, that three landowner properties went together and they served them, they all paid and went under, did an agreement with them, so I think we're really just down to four of them, four of them, and so we're really down to, and then one has, I think a well on it, I think we're down to like literally one or two lots that haven't
Maybe we just continue to deal with them on an individual basis until the subdivision is gone, a bit longer?
The concern is, I mean, the application before the court is lot six, you know, if the other lot owners want out, I think they need to file a, you know, no one's come on behalf of the entire subdivision and those requirements. And unfortunately, what should have been done a long time ago is they should have addressed it as a subdivision, as a whole, it wasn't endowed, we're kind of still dealing with it piecemeal, you know, the, the government code now requires that for final flat approval for a subdivision, that if water isn't in place, that, um, they need to put up a bond to make sure that this doesn't happen. Um, and unfortunately, this was back in ninety-five, I don't know if that was required back then, it's probably evolved over time, and now it is required, so hopefully we don't put landlords in this situation to inform that if there's not water in place, then we, we make a development bond.
So a service agreement with the water system is not constitute water in place? We just approved one in DeHennes, give a final, based on that service agreement, and there's no, the infrastructure's not there yet?
Well, and I recommended that we require they, they post a bond, and that's what the government codes says, is, the local government code is that they, that the court shall acquire a bond.
I agree with that.
Would you have, would you have one or two?
Yeah.
We, we should, we should, we should, so this is
Wasn't going to say this, and I'm glad that, I'm glad this happened today, because we're working on one right here, right now, with water, before I came into office between this time, right in office, back to this day here, Medina County was like, say, okay, everything was, and nobody had water, everything south of Medina River was numb, when I got in office, there was still a lot of water, gallon water bottles up there, uh, flushes come out, and that is the court's responsibility to do exactly what we did here earlier, is make sure that they have a bottle from the water provider, yes, we will service you water. It is our responsibility. It's not yours and it's not hers.
It's
So the stuff stops right here, up here at this table, don't have anything going forward, and you've got to have a sign, you got water.
It's one of the roads, it's either the roads aren't in place, or you've got a bond saying they are going to be in place. Uh, I think, you know, kind of look at it the same way with the water, either the infrastructure's there to provide the water, or there's a bond in place in case they don't.
Okay, if there's a bond in place, I got an, an actual argument on that one too, it's just like, uh, I have one subdivision right now in development, let's not say subdivision, but it is a 240 complex townhome, uh, they wanted us to bond the rest of the construction of it, and I finally started looking at it, and they finally sent me all the information, you know, on a million something dollars, they wanted us to bond out $33,000, I said, this don't even make sense, so I sent our engineer over, he said, I said, he doesn't want me to look at it, I said, you're going to give me the approval, can you finish this subdivision for $33,000? He said, Mary, I can't even get the equipment to go there for $33,000. So that's where we're at on that one. Now, you're telling me if we bond this thing back from 1995, and we have to finish this today, are you going to finish it for the same amount of money they're going to do back to 1995?
That's not what we're doing here, we're just letting these people
But I'm telling you, our subdivision is going forward.
I'm talking about moving forward, I'm
Moving forward, that's what I, I want to fight back, I want to move forward.
Exactly.
But I say, it's our responsibility to make sure that happens here, not eight, twenty years later.
Exactly.
Twenty-seven, just here, twenty-six, twenty-seven, you're better.
I don't have a letter from East Medina, but I did speak to Bruce on the phone, and he was well aware of what's happening in Encino Hills, and he said, if, if they get out of the subdivision, we will deal with them and supply them with water.
And I talked to him also here, last week, he was in the building, and the same thing.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the application to cancel lot six of Encino Hills subdivision.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to cancel lot six of Encino Hills subdivision located as precinct three off County Road 5710. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 19, discuss and take possible action on canceling the recent rule of regular schedule December 25th, 2023 commissioners' court meeting, um, I don't think y'all want to meet on Christmas Day, I think Jennifer and I, we visited, I think our recommendation is that we feel like we would be fine if y'all wanted to move to the regular January 8 meeting, we just, we just cancel it. I think you can kind of see, you can already see it happening on our windows, people are getting into the mode of, if, and if something's big to vote, we can always call this question in
I will make a motion, we move to January 8.
Second. So we just can't, the mode is to cancel December 25th?
Move to the 25th, and move to the, what'd you say, January 8?
Or we only need that, we just need to cancel December 25th.
Good enough.
Is that your motion, sir? I have a motion that we cancel the regular schedule December 25th, 2023 meeting, and I'm second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 20, court member announcements.
Uh, I'm very, very thankful for the rain, uh, unfortunately, it's impacted, uh, really, uh, the precinct's first major project since, uh, the start of October, and then they voted. Uh, we are currently waiting for the rain to, um, dry up a little bit, uh, we actually build up, widened and treated, uh, County Road 2615, which is around Canyon Road, it runs from F 471 north going up toward Redley Road. Uh, so we, we treated it with emulsion, everything is prepped and ready to go, uh, we're hoping that the, the rain stops at the end of the day and, uh, get some temperatures to warm up, and we will be seal coating that 1.1 mile section the Thursday before, actually this Thursday. Uh, we've been working on continuing to clear some, some brush from the right of way, uh, making sure that we can borrow the chipper, uh, and
It's true, true.
I know, it's our chipper too, uh, but coordinating, uh, with the various precincts to make sure that, that we can get, uh, the seal coat done prior to us getting into the cold winter season, where we can do a lot of that work. But, it's going, it's going good, the guys have been doing really, really well.
Okay, on the lot that's happened in precinct two, I guess everybody has Okay, I'm gonna lock this up in precinct two, I guess everybody has read the news, Medina River West Bridge is open. And all I can, I wanna thank the audit office, I wanna thank Wayne Rogers, I wanna thank our Westwood, uh, engineering group. They came together and got this thing done the day we marched quick for, in three weeks. It is absolutely beautiful bridge, it's identical what was washed out, uh, and we'll be moving forward with the PEXO plan, um, possibly for two thousand and twenty-eight. So I think the people there are very thankful that we went ahead, went forward, got the bridge put in, set a wait for another five years to go through the process of PEXO. On the other hand, we are finishing up about doing that common road, uh, we're waiting on the weather too. And that's just the one thing about being commissioner, everybody says, well, you got your list where you moved to next, that list don't mean nothing. You're sitting here working on a project, you get pours of rain over here, you gotta go and root this up, all right? So you pull off this one for four weeks, and then go over there, so we can set nothing in stone. I think every one of the victors can, uh, out on that. They think you just go, here, 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 it don't work like that. One big rain, you could be two months behind, but right now, hopefully, when the, we are shooting them all, all of them. Uh, right before she's returned, and we're working right down the street, so we just be moving machinery back and forth, of course, everyone. So if you get mad at home tomorrow, thank you for working on roads.
Everything's good in precinct three, just wanna make sure that the, the repairs that Larry did in his, on his off system bridge somehow translate over into the other precincts off system bridge credits that we need. And maybe I need to talk to Beverly, or could you just mention to Beverly, see how that's, that's gonna play out? So that's all I got. Precinct four is good, worked, worked the twin links all week last week, working on the roads up there.
Excellent. Over Jennifer, the rain. Excellent. Jessica, or, you're doing very, Jennifer, you're good, can you get it, is it working? Okay, no problem. Um, so, um, we were actually, I'll just let everybody know, and actually Aaron's here this morning. Uh, Aaron and item one, they've been working with us, trying to put together a subdivision map for our county that's going to include, will include all of our subdivisions, they're actually three stages, sketches, which is basically what item one gets a request for the street naming, so that kinda tells us that the subdivision is really moving and it's, are gonna happen, and then it will change colors, and it goes through the process, and when the court gives preliminary approval to it, uh, then it'll become another color, and then, of course, at the end, final approval, so it'll actually have all the subdivisions on it, which I think will be a great tool for the public, developers, everybody to be able to, to look at. And we're gonna just show it this morning, but we're having technical difficulties this morning, so we'll do that next time. Uh, in the meantime, I have sent the link to the court. Uh, the court, uh, just asked again if you all will help in your precinct to identify anything on there that's missing, or if it's in preliminary status, or it's not final, just so we can work back with Aaron and get that accurate. Uh, but once we get it in place, I think we'll be able to, Aaron will be able to easily maintain it, um, once we're up to date on it. But, um, also it is, there is a link from the homepage, uh, the, the county's homepage, manitex.org. You go there, right on the front page, says Medina County subdivision map, you can click on that and you'll get to it from there. It is a work in progress, um, it's got a lot on there, but again, over the next several weeks, we'll get it, we'll get it nailed down to being a hundred percent accurate, so that's the plan.
Thank you.
Judge?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the court for the longevity increase in the pay, and they bought a happy people last week. So thank you for increasing that, they had some people who didn't know what it was, and they called me and asking me how they got paid from Medina County, and I said, same thing, mom, you don't spend it at Christmas, and surprisingly, four or five of them said, okay. So, and finally get to know that you're on heavy pay, so everybody was really happy, so thank you for considering that.
Excellent. And, um, I guess I wanna thank Jennifer, our date of our Christmas party is?
December eighth.
Eighth, wait, December eighth.
Friday.
It's that, the calendars, we'll send out any other.
I'll be here.
We'll be thinking.
It's all right.
Right, I've been out in the winters all week, and try to find some for the, for the.
And, and for that same, on our incentive base, precincts, I would like to donate half a line to that party. Whatever happened to do one?
Okay, um, I believe that's all we have for this morning, um, I know we're gonna get a workshop afterwards, but I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll take a motion to adjourn, I'll second.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for all being here.